If we can go ahead and get started, I didn't make a nice number. So I want to say. First of all, I'm Anna Johnson, for those of you who may not know me, and I represent Charleston County District Eight. We have been doing a roundtable discussion for probably the entire nine years since I've been here, and this is a little unusual here, but I think coming on Zoom is better than not having communication at all. So I am happy to see all of you here, and welcome you to our roundtable discussion where we're going to do some more extensive discussion on the broadband. But before we do that, we always open up with a prayer and a pledge. So I'm going to ask our deacon, Johnson, to open up with the prayer for me, and if you all would stand with me, go do the pledge.
Amen, amen. Heavenly Father, I come to you in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Heavenly Father, I bow and worship you in the name of Jesus. Heavenly Father, we just want to give you thanks for this chance, also this glorious opportunity. Thank you for bringing us on the phone one more time. Nothing that we have done so good because of your grace and your mercy, you seem fit for us to communicate by telephone. And Father, we just want to say thank you for that. Father, we also want to thank you for this discussion on the broadband, and we want to also thank you for Congressman Anna Johnson and all of her staff, and each and every one of you on the line. You know, we can't do nothing without you, but with you, we can do all things but fail. And Father, we just want to thank you for that. Not so much for long prayer, but Father, we know it's academic and the land, and Father, we just want to thank you and praise your holy and your righteous name. And Father, when you undo all these things that you asked us to do, and we asking you, Father, we be so careful to give you all the honor, the glory, and the praises in your name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Deacon Johnson, for your prayer. And so we have a number of people that's going to be with us today. Hopefully, we don't take up too much time, but we've talked about this broadband for, I think this is our third time now, and I saw the need to give an update on what we have been doing so far. I know there's people that are looking for us to help with some immediate situations they may have, and also talk about what can happen in the long term. So we have a number of people that's going to help us with this, and I think just our first speaker that's going to bring us up to date is going to be our IT director from the Charleston County Schools District, Mr. Thomas Neveracki.
That's really close.
Oh, yes, I see. I do see you now.
That's really close.
Okay. Is that close enough?
Yes, ma'am. It's Neveracki, but I'm impressed with your first guy.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So you want to let us know what's going on with the the school system and broadband in the community?
I can certainly try, and I'm going to have to jump off shortly after I speak. But so the first thing is that the state legislature passed a bill approving $3 million for up to 100,000 MiFi devices or hotspot devices for children across the state. So of that, each district has submitted a number that they have requested. So the way this is going to work is that a third-party company will buy 100,000 devices and then divvy them up once the districts can give them the exact numbers that they need and kind of the way that they've decided who gets what. So every family in our district should have received an invitation to a survey stating whether or not they have or do not have broadband or internet access in their home, not just broadband, but even a good cellular signal. We've identified roughly 1,700, it varies between 1,500 and 2,000 devices, or families, rather, that say that they do not have adequate internet access in the home. So we have asked for far more than what we believe our need is, and when I contacted the state last week, all they could really tell me was that it's in progress, and they hope to have the devices in the students' hands before school starts. So on top of that, I am working with several agencies, not only Charleston County, but the city of North Charleston, and also a couple of commercial vendors. I've identified 14 ETV towers that are slated for demolition, and I've asked our district to stop demolition until we can figure out if we can somehow use those towers in conjunction with some other structures that either the county may own or a municipality may own. So we're continuing to work on additional broadband services or cellular services or private network, which I would own. So I can't say that there's really anything close in the near term, but certainly we are looking for long-term solutions that we can put in place. But the hotspots from the state should be coming, and every child will have the opportunity to have a device to take home if they're staying at home for virtual learning.
Okay, well, you said how many families don't have internet service? Did you give me that number?
Our Learning Services Department downtown at Calhoun Street, under the Chief Academic Office, they put out at least two surveys. The initial one back in March showed us that we had about 4,000 that principals thought might need support or help from us. Last month, a survey went out, I believe, to all families, and I'm not sure if the school, the principal, sent that out, or whether it came from downtown. But the response that we got back, we have a spreadsheet of names and addresses of families who have said, "We do not have internet access in our home. We need some kind of help," and that's about, depending on the day, anywhere from 1,200 or 1,300 to 1,600 or 1,700. We're still trying to refine that.
Okay, all right, well, and you're going to make sure that each child gets some kind of computer with a hotspot device?
Currently, I can say that we are going to ensure that every child has access to a Chromebook or an iPad. Now, the hotspots, we're dependent upon the state program to get those to us in time. So once that comes, either we're depending on the child having internet access in the home to use our devices as they are, or that a family has identified themselves as being in need to where we can account for them with these hotspots once the state brings them. So I would say that if you can get your constituents to make sure that they've reached out to the schools and that they've been counted if they are truly in need, so that we don't miss them.
Okay, all right. Anyone have any comments or questions regarding the information that's just was shared?
Yeah, the MiFi devices capability-wise, is it unlimited service? Can I do streaming, or is data, or what, this capability?
So the intent is to have it unlimited. I think that we have to kind of put the caveat of if everyone if everyone takes them home and just starts streaming, if you're talking about the virtual learning from the classroom, they will ensure that that's happening. If family members, you know, if mom and dad, and if cousins and brothers and sisters are taking the hotspots and they're streaming Netflix, they will probably throttle that down a little bit, and it may be by user, or it might be by district. I doubt it would be a district-wide thing, but they will monitor that. The state is paying the bill. So if they can support an unlimited model for everyone, then it really shouldn't matter, but the intent is that it's to be used by students for homework. And we expect that families will be using it as well, but the intent really is for the students.
Tom, is it on the Verizon Network or AT&amp;T? Are you aware of which network you're using?
That's a great question. The answer is yes. I believe it's going to be similar to the state contract, Bill, in that I believe that Verizon is going to have a piece of the contract, and AT&amp;T will have a piece of the contract. What we're going to try to do is we're going to try to identify the families by address, and we will offer a device primarily from one vendor. We'll start with Verizon. And if Verizon doesn't support that family or a group of families, we will swap out the SIM cards and we will go to an AT&amp;T. So my request to them is, we asked for 4,200. I don't know that that means we're going to get that many, but let's say we get 2,000. I might get 800 AT&amp;T, and then the rest of them on Verizon.
That's a very good strategy, because certain houses are going to have excellent Verizon service and poor AT&amp;T service, and vice versa. So I think that's a good strategy there, Tom.
Absolutely. And so the other thing, Bill, I'm sure you're aware that Verizon now has come out with a second layer of hotspot. It's a dual-band hotspot. So they have their basic one that they have been selling for, you know, $99, and it's a single band. It is what it is. And then they have the next step up, which is, I think, $199. And it is supposedly a dual-band, which means that they should be able to get, you know, instead of one bar, they might get two bars or three bars, but they're going to offer us that dual-band product as the primary.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask a question of Mr. Tom, please? And I wanted to say, I guess mine is dual-band. It gets three or four Gs, and it works pretty well, but as I said before, we use a lot of data. Are you going to support teachers who are in this area as well?
Well, yes, ma'am. So, of course. So if there's teachers that are in need, meaning that they don't have adequate either broadband from their cable company or cellular in their home, those are the critical people that we want to get to, the principals right away, and make sure that they are identified, because I will buy a hotspot. Well, let me take that back. Please scratch that from the record. If there is a teacher that is in need, there are ways that I can put a hotspot in their hands. So that, please don't report that Tom's going to buy hotspots for all teachers. But seriously, if our teachers can't teach, then they're of no value to the students. You know what I mean? So we'll find a way, but make sure that all teachers that have a true need get to the principals as soon as possible and be identified.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
In doing your survey, can you tell if the survey reached the rural communities just as well?
So my understanding is that it was district-wide. It was discussed in the principals' meeting. That meets monthly. So it really wasn't by area or by district or constituency. It was district-wide, from Edisto to McClellanville. All 80 schools were involved. So if you feel like your constituents or your children or families were not contacted, they can contact their school and just ask about the survey, or ask if they can be added to that list. We don't want to leave anybody out.
Right. I was going to say, at the end of the school year, well, not at the end, but right after the start of us being out of school, each teacher was supposed to have contacted all of their students, and then we had a reporting forum to show who needed any kind of cable, who needed, you know, some kind of Wi-Fi, and who did not. So at some point in the summer, I believe that they did that survey again. I'm not sure how, but that's how it started out. So we do need to touch bases with the schools to make sure that our kids have been included.
Yes, ma'am. The original survey that went out came back. That was the 4,000 families number that we originally got. But then when we really started asking specific questions, like if you meant that you have internet because mom has it on her cellphone, but mom is now going to work every day, you have no internet. So we wanted to clarify, and that's what the second survey reduced it almost by half.
All right. Well, we certainly want to thank you for your input, Mr. Neveracki, and certainly the two participants, Ms. Smalls and Ms. Mitchell, that asked the questions. I'd like to suggest that whenever you're speaking, if you would say your name at least, so we'll have that on our records, too. Okay, so at this time, we would hear from Mr. Denmark with the Palmetto Rule Telephone Company.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the update. Thank you for letting us be a part of this, and I'll be fairly brief, because my counterpart has more of the information than I do. I just want to give you an update. We have been expanding our footprint a little bit more in the southern Charleston area, and very quickly, we've we're almost complete with all of Little Britain except for Tom's Point Road. We've completed the Fairview area. That's done. We offer fiber to the home services in Shalali Oaks, The Refuge, along Jacksonborough Road. Right now, we're working very diligently to finish up. We like just a little touches on from EB Ellington's all the way up to Rantols. We like just a little bit of cleanup detail, getting that done, and that'll be ready to turn up. We're working on the design and applying for the permits for the completion of Old Jacksonborough Road all the way up to EB Ellington. So we've got a lot going on right now as far as trying to move things along. You know, some of the things that we've done, some of the bigger places that we have for our business customers that are enjoying the high-speed data today is like the town of Ravenale. They're on our high-speed data network now. Some of the fire districts are on them, too. So we're moving right along with that part of it to get some more and more people involved and get them tied up. One last thing I want to say, too, is, you know, as we continue to move this forward, been doing little surveys, and Ms. Johnson, thank you for the list that you sent me the other day from the Willtown area. I'm going to let Tony speak a little bit about that, because some of that could be in the area that we're moving forward. So that's pretty much where we're at. We are moving. We got about anywhere from 80 to 100 miles of fiber in the Maggot-Hollywood Ravenale area now, and we're continuing to grow that on and further and further. Tony, if you want to pick up and give us the rest, a little update on the other stuff, that would be very helpful.
Sure, I'd be glad to. Thank you again for allowing us to speak today. As Frankie mentioned, we have several self-funded projects underway, and several of those are wrapping up since we spoke a few weeks ago. Also, on our last call, we mentioned that we had submitted a large Reconnect grant. The Reconnect program is part of the USDA Rural Development Project, and we submitted that application, which included a large portion of Ravenale, mostly west of 17, but also it included a good part of Adams Run on the south side or east side of 17. So that application was submitted several months ago, and we're being told that those awards will be going out in the September timeframe. So we're all praying that PRTC will be awarded our grant. It's about a $35 million grant, and includes about $8 million that will be included in the Charleston County area. On July the 14th, so a little over a week ago, we submitted our ARDOF application, and for those of you who've been not 100% certain of what that means, the ARDOF is the Rural Development Opportunity Fund, which is part of the FCC Federal Agency. And we submitted our application. The dev has been submitted, and now we're currently finishing our due diligence and cost estimates on the areas that we are applying for, and those include the majority of Maggot-Hollywood, portions of Adams Run, and Edisto Island. Does not include Edisto Beach, but includes the majority of Edisto Island. So a large area east of 17 towards the coast that weren't included in the other program. And if we are awarded both of those, then a large portion of the areas of Ravenale-Hollywood, Maggot, Adams Run, Edisto Island, and surrounding areas, rural areas, would all have fiber, and those projects would all start next year. So if this money is awarded to us, we would start, our goal would be to start the first quarter of 2021. In the coming weeks, we're going to be able to provide a map of these areas, so I'll be able to show you in more detail specifically the areas that we're requesting funding for. I know everyone likes to see maps and wants to see exactly where we're going. So hopefully, in August, we'll have all the maps refined and be able to share those with you. And we're just very excited about the opportunity to expand fiber into the underserved areas of Charleston County.
All right. Thank you so much for your report there on what's coming, and also where you have completed some new installations. So you got the list of people who had some interest. Now, do they need to call you to let you know if they're on these roads that you have already completed, if somebody wanted to sign up for service? I don't think we've gotten instructions about how we can do that.
So I took your list, Ms. Johnson, and put it in alphabetical order, so I can determine where there was. The roads we have now, very few of those have any of the broadband on them. As Tony spoke earlier, they're going to be more involved in the reconnect side, so I don't want to waste their time by sending them. Now, I've actually kept the list, and when we start the reconnect area, those we will be reaching out to. They'll be the first ones on our list that we reach out to. I mean, I'm more than okay with them calling in, but it's just, you know, another step that, you know, we don't want to wear you out with doing things, and you don't see nothing happen, so you lose interest. So what I'd like to do with your blessings is just kind of leave it as it is today. We have it, and as soon as the reconnect is awarded, I will go through it. We will look at each one of the streets that will be in the reconnect, and then I will reach out to the customers individually, or we as a company will reach out to them individually and say, "Hey, your broadband is coming. This is when you can sign up." Will that be okay with you?
Okay, that's okay with me. Ms. Mitchell and Ms. Smalls, y'all are out there. Do y'all have questions? I think you, Ms. Mitchell?
Ms. Smalls, you on mute?
I'm sorry. I always do that, sir. I said, "That's fine. Just make sure you put us way on the top of the list." Thank you.
Well, I've got your name, so I mean, yours is the first one that's on the list.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Mitchell, Ms. Johnson, I think he's answered all the questions that I had written down to ask.
All right, okay, that sounds good. Well, we'll move right on along. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Johnson, one last thing, if you don't mind. Thank you for the help with the town of Hollywood. I've reached out. I think we're going to be on the August agenda.
Okay, I see Councilwoman Salz is on the line, so I'm sure she's listening. Councilwoman, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
Yes, yes, ma'am. The information given today was very, very important, and at our next meeting, I will share it with the town of Hollywood. So we will at least be on board to know what to expect and what the future looks for us.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
We, right now, we are out of a telephone. I'm using my cell, and I don't know, this morning it just went out, so it said "check, tell" or something on our home base phone. And maybe someone cut the wire or something. I don't know, but we just, I called the company, and they can't find anything right now. But they said it's a wire, and they're working on it, and the Adams Run, I'm in Old Jacksonborough Road over there, Willtown Community Center. So I don't know what happened, but we don't have a landline phone right now, but we on our cell.
Okay, I'm sorry to hear about that. You gentlemen, y'all haven't heard about any big things happening out in that area. I mean, that could cause something like this, maybe just a wire, individual-type things happening.
It could be, yes, ma'am. We're not aware of any systemic widespread outages or anything.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Craig, our director of libraries is on, and she has some information to share with us. Please give us your update.
Hello, everyone. My name is Angela Craig. I am the Executive Director of the Charleston County Public Library. I have what I hope is good news in that we have written a grant through the South Carolina State Library, through the CARES Act, and we are able to fund a selection of Chromebooks and MiFi's for District Eight, Ms. Johnson's district, and a few also for District Two, which is Mr. Schwer's district, which is over at McClellanville. In doing an assessment of Charleston County, I think Mr. Neveracki gave a good overview that Charleston County really does have a lot of gaps in digital equity, but District Eight has a lot of just gaps in access, and so we're working as your public library to provide that. So the devices are coming in in stages, because as you can probably imagine, everyone is ordering devices right now, so everything is backordered. We did get our first round of Chromebooks in, and we are processing those, putting on barcodes and getting them ready to go out so that we can check them out. You do have to have a current library card with CCPL, but we can help you with that. And then we also have a selection of MiFi's that are at the state library. We were going to pick them up this Friday, Ms. Johnson, but now the state library is having to close to be cleaned, because there was a concern about COVID, and so we're going to pick them up next week. But we will get the MiFi's. I talked to Ms. Johnson about how before we put the MiFi's out in circulation in District Eight, we just want to drive around to certain areas and get a feel for how well they're working. The MiFi's are compatible with the top four cellular companies and broadband, and so that should increase access. These devices are for anyone with a CCPL library card. Check out. So if you are a student, you're welcome to use them. As a teacher, or if you are a patron, you know, who isn't a student or teacher, you're also welcome to check those out. We're looking at our standard checkout times for these, but we haven't put them out in circulation yet, and we are thinking through, do we want to have these devices available for a longer checkout so that people can do things such as work and schoolwork, things beyond a normal checkout time. So we're looking at different checkout models for that, so that when patrons check out devices, they can have them for a reasonable amount of time to get work and projects done. These are free to, you know, public library users, to citizens of Charleston County. You just have to have a library card. The two libraries out there, Hollywood-St. Paul and Edisto Library, will house the bulk of the devices, and we're going to set them for non-float, which means that they will basically stay in District Eight, so that those, yeah, there we go, Ms. Smalls, so that those patrons will have right of first refusal for them. Now, we have other devices that are going to be floating around, run other areas of the county. So don't think that we're shortchanging anyone else, but we just know that from a digital equity standpoint, District Eight really is struggling, and we want to help as many patrons as we can. And this is just the first round of grants that we're working on, and we're also looking at our own budget at what we can reallocate our collections for to make additional Chromebook purchases and other MiFi devices, and also reading devices. We have a plan to preload Kindles or other reading devices with eBooks, so that even if you don't have internet at your home, you can check out these preloaded devices, so you can read our eBooks that we have on there. So the thing that's slowing us down is getting the actual devices. As I said, everyone is ordering these right now, and so everything's backordered. But we do have a small selection that we hope to have out in August, and I will let Ms. Johnson know as soon as they are available with all of the details, and that your two libraries, and hopefully you all are library users, and you're familiar with the Edisto branch and the Hollywood branch. That staff in both locations would absolutely know how to check these out. We haven't released that information yet to them, but when we do, they will be a good resource for patrons, and they can walk you through how to get the devices when they're available. So that's my update. Were there any questions from you all?
Nobody?
No, but thank you.
Of course, of course.
Okay, well, Ms. Craig, certainly thank you for the hard work you've been doing, trying to make sure we can get some of those devices here.
They're coming, Ms. Johnson. I promise.
I know I have been bugging you about that.
No, no, it's fine.
I understand. You got to be a little patient.
Yeah.
So we do have some people that are working from home, and they're having a very difficult time trying to do that, because they have to leave, you know, out of the community to go somewhere else. So this would really be a great help for us to keep. So this would really be a great help for us to keep people in the district of that.
And I forgot to mention, and you and I have talked about this, with the MiFi's, what we're hoping is if they work the way we hope they do, we can drop them in partnered locations around District Eight so that we can expand the Wi-Fi access. So these actually, we would hold a selection so that they wouldn't circulate, but that we would find places, and Ms. Johnson and I have been talking through where could we drop these? But that way, people could pull up into a parking lot or go into a restaurant or house of worship or think whatever we can find where we could put the MiFi's, and that way it would expand access in those areas that are digital dead zones. So we're not sure where we would put those just yet, but we are exploring what that would look like. And that's part of the grant is finding those areas where there are those, you know, dead zones and seeing if our MiFi's work, and that way we can expand access there.
Okay, I think, Deacon Johnson, are you trying to help us find some location?
Yes, ma'am, we have several locations in the Parkland Ferry Adams Run area. We have, we have some on Highway 174, which is 5030 Grace Chapel Baptist Church. We also got the Willtown Community Center, and I'm quite sure that we're trying to work with Shiloh and also St. Mark's Church right here on Old Jacksonville Road. And we also looking at, we also talked to someone over at Nabel, just across 17.
Okay.
So we got several areas that we could work with. As soon as you get ready, just let us know and we'll be ready to open the door.
That is great, thank you, that's wonderful.
Ms. Johnson, this is Al Brenda Mitchell. Deacon Johnson mentioned Shiloh, and I did get confirmation last night that Shiloh has agreed to it. So Shiloh would be one of the hotspots.
All right, okay.
Churches.
Sounds great. I like this partnership we have here. We got the Charleston County School System, we've got the Palmetto Transit, I mean Telephone Company, and we've got the libraries and even, I don't want, Mrs. Smalls, I don't want to leave you out. We've got our facilities people and you and Mr. Tunic, we certainly appreciate that. And let me tell you, the clerk and the deputy clerks, they've been working inside the office as well. So everybody's really working to try to make this thing happen. See how we are, you know, going to be able to bring more broadband services here. Now, community services, I don't want to forget you, Ms. Etheridge out there and Ms. Sullivan. So we'll see what you want to share with us.
Hey, thank you. So we're going to switch gears just a little bit. I'm Anna Etheridge, I work in the Charleston County Community Development Office. And our office receives federal funding from Housing and Urban Development every year. And one of the things I wanted to let you all know about is every five years, we have to put out this big plan to talk about how we're going to spend the money we get from HUD to help low to moderate income citizens across Charleston County. So right now, we've got a survey online, and I'm going to, in the chat, I'm going to put the link to our website so that all these things I'm going to talk about are on our website. And you can also, I'll put the phone number for those of you on the phone because I realize not everybody's looking at the screen. But our phone number is 843-202-6960. So the first thing I wanted to tell you about was this survey. We're trying to get as many citizens in the county to take the survey that we can. You can fill it out online, the link's on our website that I'll post here in the chat in a minute. And you can also call our office and we'll mail you a paper survey. We've, we've got some in the Town of Hollywood Town Hall and some in the Town of James Island Town Hall as well. We're also going to have some virtual roundtables, and we prefer to have roundtables in person, but that's just not realistic right this second. So the, the schedule for those roundtables is going to be in the next couple of weeks. So I think the first one's next Tuesday, so that, that one is on our website as well. And if you don't know, since, if you're on the phone and you don't see the link that I'm going to post, it's not that hard to get to our website. You just go to charlestoncounty.org and go to the department's page and look for Community Development, and that takes you right to our website, so Charleston County Community Development. So that's the five-year plan. We want a lot of citizen input for those, and the survey and the roundtables are the main way we're going to get some of that input. And then the other things that I wanted to bring you to your attention is that in addition to the normal housing and urban development funding that we get, we got CARES Act funding to deal, help deal with COVID-19 and how that's impacting low to moderate income citizens. So we've got Kristin with Origin SC who's going to speak in a minute. But we've got several different organizations that receive that CARES Act funding. They offer mortgage, rental, utility assistance. There's Meals on Wheels, the Food Bank got funding. I'm trying to think of the different types of organizations that receive that funding. Origin also got funding to help homeless individuals stay in hotels or motels. So if you know of anybody that was impacted by COVID in some way, probably the most common way is dealing with, you know, an impact that you would need mortgage or rental assistance, you can contact one of these organizations that we gave the money to to receive assistance. And those phone numbers for those organizations are on our website as well. So I wanted to make sure that there was nothing else before we turn it over to Kristin.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
So how does it work that a person would be able to get this money for assistance if they were in a hotel? Are there specific hotels that a person has to use when they have to be in quarantine? Or are they given some kind of voucher to take somewhere? Can you expand a little bit on that?
Sure, Origin received that funding. So Kristin, who's on the line with us from Origin, I'm going to let her explain how that works.
So we, currently, we are working with two hotels in the area. Both are located in North Charleston, just because we've.
Can you speak a little bit louder? I don't think we hear you.
Um, so those two, we made connections with those two hotels in North Charleston, both on Rivers Avenue. And, but we can work with other hotels that are in your district, like the In-Town Suites or the Extended Stay Hotels is what we're mostly working with. And then we pay a week at a time for those for how long that they need. And while we're trying to also get them into more permanent housing options.
What's the name of the hotels again? I didn't get that.
Uh, we're, we're currently working with In-Town Suites and Wood Springs Suites. But we can work with other hotels, we just have to make those connections. And, and then we pay the weekly rates ahead of time for as long as they're in the hotel.
Okay. Thank you. Some, we have someone else that wanted, just trying to talk. I think they're muted. Is that Deacon Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just saying that it was a very, some good communication that we had today, and I just hope everybody would follow through with it because we definitely need it in the low country, especially in the area that we in, the undisturbed area. And, and we just plead for whatever you guys offer. And we're going to take a heed to that and try to get on board and work along with you and your staff and all the people that came on today that was telling us what we need to do and what are you guys trying to help us do, because we definitely need that. And we want to thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Well, we're trying to do the best we can because we're all in this together.
Amen.
Going to need, everybody's going to need each other. So, um, did you get through, Ms. Bastian?
No, I was just answering your question. But we do have funding from Charleston County for mortgage assistance, rental assistance, and utility assistance for up to three months worth of help. And we also have the hotel vouchers as well. We are doing all of our intakes virtually, either by phone, or if we can do a Zoom meeting, we try to do that to try and get folks helped as quickly as we can. We have a dedicated phone number for that program. That is 843-628-2301. And we also have information on our website for that as well. We are, we've ramped up our staffing so that we can try and get back to folks and get them scheduled for these intake sessions with our case managers as quickly as possible.
Now, where are you located?
We're located in North Charleston on Rivers Avenue. But we serve the entire tri-county area as well as other parts of the state with our focus on the tri-county.
What's the address now on Rivers Avenue?
8084 Rivers Avenue.
Okay, but most of your information, you're saying you have the applications online?
We do, at originsc.org, or we have an intake phone number for this program as well.
Deacon Johnson, you have a comment?
No, I'm saying it's good. I'm quite sure someone can use that service. I, I'm, I don't know of anybody right now, but we need to get her phone number so we could, you know, if we know anyone, access is okay to give us the number.
Absolutely, I'll put it in the chat.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for her?
Yes, ma'am, I have a question. This is Althea Salters. Are the criteria publicized or any way for anyone to qualify for all of your services?
So the, the biggest thing is that they, the folks have to be affected by COVID-19. And we're, most people that are needing rental or utility or mortgage assistance or hotel stays are impacted by COVID-19. So that's not, we're not finding difficulty in meeting that guideline. The other one is resident of Charleston County and, excuse me, and there's some income restrictions, but they are much higher than we, than most financial assistance programs. So we're able to go up to 80% of area median income, which for a family of four is up to $64,000 a year. So those income restrictions are much higher than we, than, than we've seen in the past with other financial assistance programs so that we can help more individuals with this program.
Okay.
One of, any documents they will have to provide to you, I'm quite sure you don't take word of mouth.
Right, yes, we do require some income documentation, so former pay subs, unemployment letters, some documentation showing either that they are receiving income or that they were receiving income and are no longer receiving income. And then we have a few forms that we fill out as well just to, you know, make sure that we go over a budget. And we try to talk to folks about being sustainable going forward, try to, try to insert some financial counseling in there if we can so that people can, you know, continue to be successful. But we try to make it as, not as much of a burden as possible.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so I have a, okay, go ahead, Deacon. I think I saw you like a one. Deacon Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, were you trying, were you saying something?
No, I, I was just saying that, yeah, because I, I remember when they built those places downtown, some of the people can't even afford them because they, you know, in order to afford certain areas, you have to make 12, $18 or $20 an hour. And, and in the Charleston area, ain't too many people making that kind of money. So, so that, that's right there going to tell you that, that might be a burden also. But I'm quite sure, that's why I said earlier, a lot of people do need the help. And sometimes people just act for it. They, they, you know, they're going to always get turned down, like in the past. But it's good that they got that out, so maybe it will help somebody. And, and we just hoping and praying that it do.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Bastian. I don't see anyone else. Any questions? Do we have Mr. Patno? Oh, okay, well, we're moving right along on time. We have Jason Patno here, and he's with our Director of the Emergency Management Department. So he's going to share some updates with us at this time. I don't think so.
There you go.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, thanks for joining us this afternoon. As Ms. Johnson said, my name is Jason Patno, and I'm the Director of the Charleston County Emergency Management Department. I do have a PowerPoint presentation that I'm going to go through a couple of slides. I know not everyone is connected viewing our screens, so I'm going to repeat the information on the slides so that everyone is aware. I'm going to provide you with an update on COVID-19, and I'm also going to talk about how COVID-19 has impacted the 2020 hurricane season. All of the information that I'm going to share with you this afternoon was taken from the South Carolina DEHEC website. And the data is current as of the 20th of July. So as of the 20th of July, we have tested almost 650,000 residents in the state of South Carolina. According to DEHEC, there are almost 95,000 positive COVID-19 cases statewide. There are over half a million negative COVID-19 tests statewide as well. That's a positivity rate of 14.5%. The national average is 9%. The statewide recovery rate is 87%. And so I have to note that out of those confirmed positive cases, those are not each individual residents. You may have situations where a resident has tested positive more than once, and those numbers are reflected in that 94,000 total. And so a breakdown of cases by gender, 52.4% of the cases in the state of South Carolina are female and 44.4% are male. Breakdown of the cases by race in the state of South Carolina, 45% of the cases are white, 33% are African-American. I'm having a difficult time seeing my screen. 9% identify as other. 12% identified as unknown, and then 1% were Asian-American, Indian, Alaskan, or Pacific Islander. Unfortunately, to date, they've reported 1,221 deaths statewide. So out of those known positives, that's a 1.3% mortality rate. The national average is 3.68%. The average age of those fatalities in the state of South Carolina is 74.3 years of age. We've had 99 deaths, fortunately, reported in Charleston County. Of the fatalities, 49%. Of the fatalities, 49% in the state of South Carolina are white, 42% are African-American, 5% are Asian-American, Indian, Alaskan, Pacific Islander, 3% are listed as other, and 1% are listed as unknown. Charleston County has the highest cumulative case total in the state of South Carolina with 9,785 cases reported. Second highest is Greenville County with 8,728. Ori County is the third highest, was 6,974. And Richland County reports in 6,408 positive cases. So out of those 9,785, based on the 2019 census projections provided by the U.S. Census Bureau, that's 2.37% of the county's population that's tested positive for COVID-19. We do have fixed testing locations throughout Charleston County, and I'll read through a couple of those. There are various CVS locations on West Ashley, Coastal Pediatrics, Mount Pleasant, East Cooper. We also have Premier Medical on James Island and Nathan Care in North Charleston are just a few of the fixed testing locations in Charleston County. We are working to partner with the Federal Healthcare Network to establish a fixed testing site at the North Charleston Performing Arts Center. It looks like that testing will begin the second week in August. It'll be one day per week, then one weekend day per month. And Feder has agreed that they will provide some evening hours as well. At least one weekday per month will be evening hours. There's some mobile testing that's been established and of note, and I've got it listed here, but Adams AME Church in North Charleston on tomorrow, Jane Edwards Elementary, Edisto Island is also tomorrow, Charleston School of Arts in North Charleston tomorrow, on the 25th, Burke High School downtown, on the 27th, West Ashley High School, on the 28th, Jenny Moore Elementary in Mount Pleasant, and then on the 30th, the Charleston School of Arts in North Charleston.
Let me interrupt you right here. I think this is a list that we can share with everybody. If you could provide us that list to send out to the roundtable participants, I think would be a good opportunity for them to have the list and they could, you know, share it with others.
Yes, ma'am. Kristin Hess is in the room with me and she said that she'll send a listing out to the participants of your roundtable today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So COVID-19, obviously, everyone's aware of the social distancing requirements that are in place in businesses as well as in government operations. And those same social distancing standards are being applied to our hurricane shelters by the American Red Cross. They operate all of the hurricane shelters in the state of South Carolina. And what that's done is it's, we were already strapped for space in Charleston County due to the fact that all of our shelters are located out of the flood surge zone. Last year, by comparison, we had 3,473 shelter spaces. Due to new social distancing requirements for the 2020 hurricane season, we will only have 634 spaces for shelteries. And that's based on a Red Cross requirement of 110 square feet per occupant that allows for both a cot and the required social distancing guidance that's issued by the CDC. Our hurricane shelters in Charleston County underwent an engineering assessment last year and it was determined that those shelter sites are only good through a category three hurricane. And I can have Kristin send this information out as well. But our hurricane shelters in Charleston County are Dunston Elementary, Military Magnet, North Charleston Creative Arts, North Charleston Elementary, Stoll High School and Zucker Middle School. We do have one county-operated pet-friendly shelter that's located off of Leeds Avenue. So in regards to shelters, again, space is at a premium. So we're asking residents to prepare now so they may relocate prior to the arrival of a hurricane or evacuate if the governor has issued an evacuation order for the coastline. Any, any of your questions? That concludes my update on COVID-19 in Charleston County.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
Information.
I think we have one. Looks like Mr. Deacon Johnson?
Yeah, only thing I'm saying, it's good information that we, we can use. He said the secretary sent him out. So we'll be taking heed to that and trying to keep that in mind, you know, for the shelter and everything because with the COVID-19, you, you have to stay distant. And now you have less than a third of the place that, where we can go because now you don't have enough space.
That's correct. So this is a really big thing here. And we need to spread the word for people to start preparing some temporary place if they have to evacuate it. They already know where to go.
That's true.
Okay. All right, well, I think that concludes everything we wanted to share with you. Our next meeting will be August 26. And I think the topic, I'm not sure about the topic right now. I have affordable housing in mind. But we will see if that'll be our next topic. And until then, I want to thank everybody for coming out and we'll see you on the 26th.
Okay.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Also, thank all of our speakers.
Yes, yes.
Thank you so much.
Okay, you're welcome.